For now.
Yes.
Joe, do I have to do anything special to go on the public site now? Did you turn it on yet?
No, it's, we are starting the live stream now, which means in about 40 seconds, it will be live for anybody to view.
I see it live.
I don't see any camera.
We are live. Okay, thanks Tristan. All right, before we start here, I hand things over to Dr. Swab. Thank you if you're joining us virtually. This is our first virtual experience with school board meetings. My name's Joe Hurst. I'm superintendent here at Bradford. We will be streaming this live tonight for anybody in the community to watch our event. Basically include anybody that would like to be in now. I'm seeing some text messages here that some people are already in. Hopefully everything works fine. This is our first experience with this large of a venue. So if there are any issues, then obviously if you have my cellphone number, you're welcome to text me, but we will try to correct whatever we can. So that being said, if anybody has the microphone and/or is in the active meeting, we've got headphones on now. Hopefully you'll be able to mute yourself if you need to, so there's no feedback. I can also say that we are in a meeting now, and I want to show everybody in the meeting. We are all spread out nice and wide through the room with more than six feet distance in between. All of us have had our temperatures taken tonight, so as of right now, we are all clean and with no temperatures. So that being said, Dr. Swab, I'm going to hand it over to you, and we'll get rolling.
Great, thanks Joe. I'd like to welcome everyone here to Bradford Exempt Village Board of Education, April 20th meeting, if we could stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Due to your commitment to justice. Well, that was quite an experience and preparation. So, roll call please.
Dr. Swab.
Here.
Mrs. Brewer.
Here.
Pastor Reindl.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here. Next, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. And this is a virtual open meeting during the state emergency. The Bradford Exempt Village Board of Education recognizes the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency by signing an executive order. And the Board also recognizes Amy, Dr. Amy Action, Director of Department of Health, to limit and prohibit mass gatherings. So therefore, we will hold our board meeting in a virtual fashion, and the attendees at our meeting are following the directions of temp taken before the meeting, as well as us being separated. Next, I would like to review the agenda this evening. We're reviewing our typical administrative reports. We have our financial reports from the Treasury, and new and old business. So to get right into this beginning of the meeting, we have next the adoption of the agenda. And so for additions and deletions, I have a couple changes to the written agenda. We would like to remove the teacher handbook from the agenda tonight. And we've requested change William Wright from the consent agenda, and he will be placed, who is initially listed on page five, employment and resignations, item A, the last individual, William Wright, White, that will be moved to item 10. So the employment and certified personnel reemployment for William White will be separately as item 10. Do I have any other additions or deletions to the printed agenda? Hearing, hearing, none?
I'm trying to unmute there. I don't want to, but if anybody needs a copy of the agenda, it is on the front page of our website at Bradford.K12.OH.us.
Great, thank you very much. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as?
No.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a roll call for approval?
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindl.
Yes.
Mr. B. Sec.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Next is approval of minutes of March 9th, 2020 regular meeting, and March 13th, a special meeting. We've had a chance to review these prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call for approval, please.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindl.
Yes.
Mr. B. Sec.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Next is approval of minutes of March 9th, 2020 regular meeting, and March 13th, a special meeting. We've had a chance to review these prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call for approval, please.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindl.
Yes.
Mr. B. Sec.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
I'm staying.
Next is our administrative reports. So I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Hurst, Superintendent.
All right, I have a few things I'd like to discuss or basically send out today. I'd like to thank our staff. First of all, this is an unprecedented time, and nobody really expected any of this this year. So for administrators, our teachers, our aides, our kitchen staff, our custodians, our bus drivers, our students, our parents, anybody that's involved with our educational process, this is definitely not what we expected this year. So to see the adapt, to see what's going on, I've been very impressed with what's happened and what we've seen in our community. One of those things that we've been very impressed with was the distribution of lunches each day. As of today, we've distributed over 4,000 lunches to our community members, our students this year, since we've shut down in our school building. We have, as of today, if you haven't noticed, or haven't, didn't watch Dr. Governor Dewine today, he did extend the original shutdown through May 1st. And today, he went ahead and shut down K-12 buildings face-to-face contact for the remainder of the school year. So as of now, we have five Mondays. Those Mondays, obviously, we will continue to distribute lunches free of charge to our students. We've been delivering out-of-coverage student lunches to anybody that is in need, and those that are in town can come through the park each Monday to pick those up, and it's worked very well so far. We've had a few hiccups, I think we've overcome, but I think overall, it's worked very well. One of the things, obviously, we have to overcome and to come up with plan B at this point, we don't know what it's going to be like when we get to the original graduation day of May 23rd. So we are coming up with contingency plans. One of the motions tonight on the agenda is to move that back to June 6th, if we are still under restrictions as of 23rd of May. On June 6th, if we are still under quarantine or some kind of restrictions, how many can be in the gym, how close they can be, and if we can't do it in the gymnasium, and of course, that's our ultimate goal, we're looking for something differently. I feel horrible that our seniors haven't been able to make the experiences and the memories that everybody has made over the course of their lives. Every student has that ability and every right. This year, the class of 2020 is going to have very different memories than what I had as a senior or even somebody from the class of 2019 last year. But we will do what we can. We're going to try to have, obviously, first preferences here in the building. After that, we will do something where we will have some kind of recognition for our seniors and make it memorable in a different way if we have to do that. But it will be June 6th, again, assuming everything passes here during new business, if we can have it, and only if we can have it on May 23rd. We do have a motion also for no exams. Our grading schedule basically moves exams into the final grades. This year, with virtual learning for our high school kids and our junior high schools, this is going to be somewhat difficult and cumbersome. So we are going to make the recommendation to do away with exams this year, do away with the part that would relate to GPA. But all of those classes that would count for OHSAA eligibility and college transcripts, those will stay as transcripted.
Venue, so if there are any issues, then obviously if you have my cellphone number, you're welcome to text me, but we will try to correct whatever we can. So that being said, if anybody has the microphone and/or is in the active meeting, we've got headphones on now. Hopefully you'll be able to mute yourself if you need to, so there's no feedback. I can also say that we are in a meeting now, and I want to show everybody in the meeting. We are all spread out nice and wide through the room with more than six feet distance in between. All of us have had our temperatures taken tonight, so as of right now, we are all clean and with no temperatures. So that being said, Dr. Swab, I'm going to hand it over to you, and we'll get rolling.
Great, thanks, Joe. I'd like to welcome everyone here to Bradford Exempt Village Board of Education, April 20th meeting, if we could stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic of America. Well, that was quite an experience and preparation. So, roll call, please.
Dr. Swab.
Here.
Mrs. Brewer.
Here.
Pastor Reindel.
Here.
Mr. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Next, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening, and this is a virtual open meeting during the state emergency. The Bradford Exempt Village Board of Education recognizes the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency by signing an executive order, and the board also recognizes Dr. Amy Action, Director of Department of Health, to limit and prohibit mass gatherings. So therefore, we will hold our board meeting in a virtual fashion, and the attendees at our meeting are following the directions of temp taken before the meeting, as well as us being separated. Next, I would like to review the agenda. This evening, we're reviewing our typical administrative reports. We have our financial reports from the Treasury, and new and old business. So to get right into this beginning of the meeting, we have next the adoption of the agenda. And so for additions and deletions, I have a couple changes to the written agenda. We would like to remove the teacher handbook from the agenda tonight, and we've requested change William Wright from the consent agenda, and he will be placed, who is initially listed on Page Five, Employment and Resignations, Item A, the last individual, William Wright. That will be moved to Item 10. So the employment and certified personnel reemployment for William White will be separately as Item 10. Do I have any other additions or deletions to the printed agenda?
Trying to unmute there. I don't want to, but if anybody needs a copy of the agenda, it is on the front page of our website at bradford.k12.oh.us.
Great, thank you very much. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a roll call for approval?
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindel.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Next is approval of minutes of March 9th, 2020 regular meeting, and March 13th, a special meeting. We've had a chance to review these prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call for approval, please.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindel.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
I'm staying.
Next is our administrative reports, so I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Hurst, Superintendent.
All right, I have a few things I'd like to discuss or basically send out today. Like to thank our staff. First of all, this is an unprecedented time, and nobody really expected any of this this year. So for our administrators, our teachers, our aides, our kitchen staff, our custodians, our bus drivers, our students, our parents, anybody that's involved with our educational process, this is definitely not what we expected this year. So to see the adapt, to see what's going on, I've been very impressed with what's happened and what we've seen in our community. One of those things that we've been very impressed with was the distribution of lunches each day. As of today, we've distributed over 4,000 lunches to our community members, our students this year, since we've shut down in our school building. We have, as of today, if you haven't noticed, or haven't didn't watch Governor Dewine today, he did extend the original shutdown through May 1st, and today, he went ahead and shut down K-12 buildings face-to-face contact for the remainder of the school year. So as of now, we have five Mondays. Those Mondays, obviously, we will continue to distribute lunches free of charge to our students. We've delivered out-of-village student lunches to anybody that is in need, and those that are in town can come through the park each Monday to pick those up, and it's worked very well so far. We've had a few hiccups, I think we've overcome, but I think overall, it's worked very well. One of the things, obviously, we have to overcome and to come up with Plan B at this point, we don't know what it's going to be like when we get to the original graduation day of May 23rd. So we are coming up with contingency plans. One of the motions tonight on the agenda is to move that back to June 6th, if we are still under restrictions as of 23rd of May. On June 6th, if we are still under quarantine or some kind of restrictions, how many can be in the gym, how close they can be, and if we can't do it in the gymnasium, and of course, that's our ultimate goal, we're going to do something differently. I feel horrible that our seniors haven't been able to make the experiences and the memories that everybody has made over the course of their lives. Every student has that ability and every right. This year, the class of 2020 is going to have very different memories than what I had as a senior or even somebody from the class of 2019 last year. But we will do what we can. We're going to try to have, obviously, first preferences here in the building. After that, we will do something where we will have some kind of recognition for our seniors and make it available in a different way if we have to do that. But it will be June 6th, again, assuming everything passes here during new business, if we can have it, and only if we can't have it on May 23rd. We do have a motion also for no exams. Our grading schedule basically moves exams into the final grades. This year, with virtual learning for our high school kids and our junior high suits, this is going to be somewhat difficult and cumbersome. So we are going to make the recommendation to do away with exams this year, do away with the part that would relate to GPA, but all of those classes that would count for OHSAA eligibility and college transcripts, those will stay as transcribed grades. So those grades, basically six through 12, will remain as graded, A through F type of grades, but we also had to say no exams with that, and then K-5 students, we would go to a pass incomplete. I don't necessarily like the idea of giving anybody a failing grade, especially under these strange circumstances. Students are going to have to work to get that, but obviously, if somebody doesn't get their work complete in those grades, K-5, they would receive an incomplete, and then they would have to continually make up that work before it changed into a failing grade. But we want to make sure that students have that availability to make sure that they continue with that, and that's why we're going to suggest the passing complete grades. Couple of updates, Freitag is going to send us some proposals here early this next week, or even hopefully tomorrow morning, about our vestibule project, and hopefully we'll have those in hand soon, so we'll be able to move forward with that and get bids and get that project rolling. And then I wanted to also say that our class of 2020, tonight at 8:20, which is 2020 on military time, we are going to light the town, and I don't know if anybody didn't get that message, but through Twitter and OneCall, we're going to light the stadium up. We're encouraging anybody in the town to turn on the porch lights at 20 after 8, which is 2020, to give support for our seniors, because this is just a different time for our seniors, and I, for one, would like to do anything we can to shed some light on what they're going through and, obviously, give some recognition to those students that have gone through their entire educational career and here during the last quarter of their 13 years at Bradford. Things are just a little different, and I want to let people know that people are thinking of our seniors, and this is just one small way to recognize and give some recognition to those kids that have spent their entire careers here and deserve anything we can give them at this point. So with that, that is all mine, unless you've got any questions, anyone?
There we go, got my mic working, I apologize. Next is Mrs. Levy for our elementary principal report.
Hi, everybody. I just kind of wanted to give you an update. I know Joe asks all the time about the students that are actually turning in work and what our percentages are. At the end of last week, it was around 95%, but since the beginning of this week, we are now at 99% of our students who have actually turned in some work for the time that we've been off, so I've been excited about that. Last week, we had our last, well, we have another three weeks, and we passed out for paperwork, since we didn't know what the governor was going to say up until today. So any kind of paper pencil work has been given to students. There's been a lull, sometimes the work has not been received as quickly as we would have liked for some of the teachers, but we're getting more efficient with that, and so it seems like it's going better. I try to do announcements every day for the students on Dojo and Facebook, so if you want to tune into the elementary Facebook page, you can see an announcement every day. The teachers, we've had some staff meetings, really good ideas, thinking ahead of what it might look like in the future, since I know discussions have been about maybe hybrid learning, starting the new school year, so we've got teachers discussing that. Also, we're going to be having a kindergarten registration screening meeting on Wednesday to discuss what that's going to look like. I've been looking at some options and maybe doing some Zoom meetings to be able to do some kindergarten screening as well. But overall, I've been so impressed with the kids, the staff, the parents have really stepped up more than anybody could ever imagine. Like I said, I've been very pleased. We also, if you want to dress up, it's Spirit Week, Virtual Spirit Week. Today was Dress Like a Hero, and we've got several heroes on here, and we thank you, Dr. Swab, for going out and making sure that you continue to take care of everybody. But like I said, I've been impressed. It's not been what we wanted, but we're doing a good job. Any questions?
Great, thank you very much. Next, then, Mr. Triplet for the secondary principal report.
Yeah, kind of like Joe and Michelle both said, you know, the students are doing great right now. You know, we're really proud of the participation. We have over 95%. We've got a few that are consistently still not turning in work, and those who've had internet issues, we've been able to fix that and try to get them some paper packets and deliver those on Mondays and pick them up on Mondays from them. And that's going really well, and the staff, they've really adjusted well to this, I think, given the circumstances of less than 48 hours, being told that, you know, this is what we're going to. They've adjusted really well. They're trying to keep the rigor up, especially at the high school. I think there might be one or two teachers that are still struggling to find the happy medium between that of the workload and trying to keep it rigorous for them. And like Mr. Hurst said, you know, we're still debating and talking about consistent all the time about the graduation date. You know, hopefully, we're able to make that happen on the 23rd, even if it's just students and parents. You know, we'd like to have that traditional ceremony, at the very least, for those students. Mrs. Ray, you know, I know she's been in and out, and she's been doing interims and doing EMIS work with Roxanne over at Miss Cinewa, and taking care of that. So she's been doing a lot as well for us and doing a great job. And I know Mr. Daughtry, he's been calling those kids that haven't been logging on and tracking them down and make sure they're getting their work turned in. But overall, you know, the staff and the students have been doing a great job, and you know, I have no complaints about that. You guys have any questions for me and anything else that might be going on?
Nope, it looks like everybody is pleased with your report. Thank you very much. Sounds like you guys are doing a great job. Next is Mr. Daughtry. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I'd like to piggyback on what the other administrators have said. Everybody's working really hard. I've sat in through some of the Zoom or the Google Meet classes in the high school just to see what was going on, and the kids seem to be doing really well with that. Teachers are doing really well. It's kind of interesting to see teachers trying to teach a lesson virtually, and that's something that I think is, nobody knew that that's what they would be doing when we started the school year yet. They're really working hard to get that through. Like Mr. Triplet said, I've been calling some parents, especially high school, junior high kids who haven't, you know, maybe are missing assignments for a particular teacher. Overwhelmingly, the parents have been very supportive of all we've done. They've worked hard, and we've seen some results where some of the work that maybe wasn't getting turned in has been turned in since then. Also, I have a report to make on the E-Day, which is something that you guys approved. We used our sixth day, and unfortunately, the E-Day came out on March 13th, which just also happened to be the last full day we were in school. So that E-Day kind of got mixed up a little bit with everything that went on. Those did still get sent home. A lot of them still made it back. Now, we were hoping for an 80% turn-in rate. The high school had a 71% turn-in rate, and the elementary had a 70% turn-in rate on those E-Days. So, and there were a lot of issues with that. If we would have done this without having to send the kids home, the teachers would have reminded the kids to get those turned in, they would have been able to collect them. You know, these teachers haven't seen the kids face-to-face since they turned that E-Day in. So, and I know we've learned a lot over the last couple of weeks, and we'll learn a lot more over the next couple of weeks about how to do this, right? So I'm hoping next year, if we have to explore this, we'll have more ideas on how to do it right. I think we've learned a lot. Everybody's learned a lot about how to do those virtual classrooms. I remember having the discussions with you guys, and a lot of what you guys wanted us to do for the E-Day, we're now doing. So I think that's something that we've learned how to do, and next year, I think we need to reexamine this and maybe make some changes on what we expect. So that's my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Looks like none. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob. Next is Ms. Shell, Athletic Director, Transportation Director Report.
Hi, guys. So obviously, today, Governor Dewine canceled school, which also means sports for the rest of the season, and that's very heartbreaking. Despite all of that, I've kept in touch with coaches and throughout this entire process, and emailed them once or twice, sometimes three times a week, and they're all staying in contact with their athletes. Up until this point, they've been sending home workouts, and I think the kids have been receptive to that with the hope that we were going to come back. We also have a couple other exciting things going on. Right before all of this started, we did get a brand-new school bus that Mrs. Fenter will be driving once we get back to school. We did get a new athletic website, which is railroaderathletics.com. I've been doing some trainings on that to figure out how to work the ins and outs of everything, so hopefully, by the time we get back to school, I'll be a super pro at that, and it's going to be a lot more informative for the parents, the kids, other school districts, and everything else. It's really fantastic. We also have a new graphics company that'll allow us to, for lack of a better word, look really fancy and cool, and it gives us the ability to print out really awesome schedules that we can hand out to the community, we can put up all over the school. Overall, it's going to, and it's accessible to the entire district. It's not just for the athletic department. So all the principals can use it and post to their Twitter and their Facebook pages, and the scheduling portion of that is what kind of drew us to that. But that's really all I have. Been staying in contact with coaches, and hopefully, that they will continue to stay in contact with their kids through all of this, and I'm sure that they will.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Chloe, Chloe?
Yeah.
Once we've got this broadcast through YouTube right now, do another shout out at what the new website is.
It's railroaderathletics.com.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Next, Mrs. Brewer, do you have anything for the Upper Valley CC update?
Same thing at Upper Valley, they're all doing online studies. It's a little harder with Career Tech, especially in my field, it's a little more complicated than just sending work or virtual assignments, but they're doing a great job. I've been looking at some of the classes, they've been posting a lot of their videos that the teachers are doing, and it's just, everybody's doing a fantastic job. So our Career Tech should be right on schedule come fall. That's all.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you very much for your update. Next is Mrs. Server, do you have anything from the Treasures Department?
Well, it's been an interesting time. I really think that we're going to look back on this and think it was a life-changing event, because it's already been that way. And in my world, I've been very happy that we've been able to manage doing a lot of things online, which has made working this way a much more palatable operation. And I think it's been fairly successful in that respect, but some of the things that we're going to be worrying about as time goes on is how the finances are going to be working. We are going to be talking about a five-year forecast here at the next meeting, and it's been very difficult to project things because of some of the changes that the governor has projected for us, but we don't actually know what impact that's all going to have. So I'm keeping an eye on that and trying to try to keep you informed as we work through this. We've got a lot of dynamics going on here with the unemployment, and I've been listening to a lot of webinars on the economy and trying to understand how this is going to impact us, but it's impacting us in almost every respect that we have. We need to try to look at what we're going to be doing in the future, how this is going to be changing our operations and working through all those situations. And if anyone has any questions with specifics on this, I think I will go into it more next month when we're talking about forecasts, but I just think we're going to be seeing a lot of changes here in the next year as we work through this situation. And with that, I think I'm going to conclude my talk for tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Next is our public participation section of our agenda, and so by Board Policy 0169, public participation is permitted as indicated in the Order of Business and at the discretion of the presiding officer, and today that we will suspend public participation for this meeting. Next item on our agenda is the financial report from the Treasury. The superintendent recommends approval of the consent items, the Financial Journal, Number Two, the check register, Four, approval of permanent appropriations, Five is approval of transfers and advances, and then we have donations from Easy Lawn, Trey and Michael Emanuel, Premier Health, J&amp;K Home Services, Common Ground Christian Church, Dick Levy Trucking, Jake Fashioner. And that would conclude the donations. Is the Amendment Section of the 125 Flexible Benefit Plan, and that goes through to the conclusion of the consent agenda, and there's multiple things that you can view on the agenda itself. Do I have a motion to accept the items as presented?
I'm moving to accept.
Second.
One second.
Any discussion or question regarding the items we have before us?
I do have one question, and this is to Carla. The money for the brother in church for the lunches, do you know how that's dispersed or how they do that?
Actually, I turned that over to Mrs. Clark, and I know she looks at the balances and some of the accounts that are out there. Her rationale, I do not know, but she does have that in our record. I would be glad to talk to her about what rationale she uses and convey that back to you.
That would be great. I just had a parent ask me, actually, she stated to me that she knows that this has happened several times, but she mentioned that never once have they put anything on her children's lunch account, and she wondered how they did that. I thought they just paid all of the lunch accounts. I didn't realize they, like, picked and choose, or they didn't give a percent to everyone. So when I told her, no, they just pay that towards the balance, I didn't realize that some people, they don't pay that towards. So I would just like to know how that works.
I think it's about balancing balances, and as I said, I don't really know. I think the goal is to not have any child owe money at the end of the year.
Correct.
And so, and yes, it has happened, I believe, at least twice this year, and has happened periodically. They've been very, very good to the school as far as relating dollars to the school for the good of the children. But as I said, I will get a rationale back from Mrs. Clark and give you some idea of how that has happened in the past.
Thank you. That's what I wonder. I know, I mean, we really appreciate every bit of it, but I would just like, if someone asked me, I'd like to be able to tell them how we disperse it, okay?
Yes, I understand completely. It's a very good question, and I think it deserves a good answer, so I will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the consent agenda items up for approval? Hearing none, roll call for approval, please.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Reindel.
Yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is old business. We have no items to discuss this evening. Next is new business, Consent Calendar Items 1 through 9, and the superintendent recommends the approval of the Consent Items, 1, Employment and Resignations. Item A is Certified Personnel, and I bring to note that we removed the William Wright to the end of item number 10. Next is Certified Personnel, listed. Next is Reemployment for Five Years, Certified Personnel listed in Item C. Item D is a supplemental assignments. Item E is Accepting Retirement, Resignation of Steve Hawker, effective April 1st. Next, Item 2 is Approval of the Master Service Agreement with Meta Solutions. And next, Item 3 is a resolution, whereas the staff members mold our future citizens through their guidance and ed- through their guidance and education and whereas today, staff members and our students have widely differing backgrounds and abilities and whereas our society expects public education to provide quality education services to all children no matter their backgrounds or abilities and whereas our country's future depends in large measure upon the education of our youth they receive today and whereas our staff spends endless hours outside the classroom preparing engaging lessons, evaluating the process, counseling and coaching students, performing community service and supporting the instructional goals of the district and whereas our community recognizes that its staff are providing quality educational services to our students, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Bradford Exempt Village Board of Education designates the week of May 4th to 8th, 2020 as a staff member appreciation week and this community and therefore be it further proclaimed that the Board of Education calls on the community to join with it and personally expressing appreciation to our staff members for our job well done, the Board would like to express their appreciation with a small token of appreciation and our food provided in the buildings during that week or an alternative will be determined based on our contact at that time. And next is a resolution stating the non-licensed individuals' employments. Next item four is entering into agreement with Miami County Sheriff's Department to hire a full-time resource officer. Item five, for the period affecting the COVID shutdown, assignment grades will be modified allowing elementary classes to utilize the passport incomplete option for the fourth grading period of 2019, 2020 and the final year grade will be average utilizing the first three grade periods of the year. The grades for 612 will continue with traditional marks as the final grades will be exempt from the final average for the course during pandemic closure. Item seven, if the school is closed by order of the Governor or the District is restricted from congregating during the May 23rd graduation date, the date will be moved as Mr. Hurst noted to the same time on June 6th. If limitations are in place to prevent the formal ceremony in the building, an alternative structure ceremony will be utilized. Item eight is the Superintendent recommends upon the successful completion of their high school work credit testing requirements as established by the Board of Education, the list of candidates for class of 2020 are recommended for graduation. They are listed in our agenda. And item nine is entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Bradford Educational Association to Exempt Teacher Evaluation 2019, 2020 as described in the memorandum, which you can Do I have a motion to accept the items presented?
So, ma'am.
I'm moving.
In a second.
One second.
Thanks, Mike. Any discussion or questions regarding the multiple items before us for approval? Hearing none, roll call for approval?
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is number 10, which would read Superintendent recommends the employment certified personnel reemployment, one-year limited teaching contract effective 2020, 2021 for William White. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And I will second. Next is discussion.
I'm going to speak a little bit. I know there's only so much I can say in the public. So main thing is the reason I wanted it separate, I had several parents come to me over the year. I just wanted to, I had four or five sets of parents come to me that he was, they weren't, they didn't feel that he was doing a good job teaching the science class. And the response to that, some of them has even said that they was going to make sure somehow their kid didn't have to take science or was going to take it someplace else. So I just thought, and I've already contacted, Mr. Hurst knows about it, Mr. Tripp has been working with the ma'am, their opinion's a little bit different mine, so I guess that's the reason I wanted to separate that out. I'm hoping these families came to some of you other board members and give their feelings. Like I told Mr. Hurst, that I had more complaints in my 14 years on the board, this is the most complaints I've had about any person that we've ever hired. That's including, of course, you know, coaches, you always hear complaints about them, but but in this case, this is the most complaints I ever had, so that's why I separated. That's all I can say.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call for approval?
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer. Pastor Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Next is Executive Session Motion for the Dismiss All Discipline or a motion of compensation of an employer official, which is item G1 on your agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call for approval?
I had Mr. Scott Beesecker as the motion and Mrs. Maria Brewer as the second.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. And for a note, there will be no action taken by the Board at the conclusion of the Executive Session.
And if I can throw something in, I'm going to stop the live stream here. I will turn it back on when we come back into open session. However, just like Dr. Swab had said, we will have no business at that point other than the adjournment. Since we did not have public participation this evening, if anybody has questions, please email me, jheurst@bradford.k12.oh.us. If you didn't get it, it is on the website. Give me an email, give me a call, whatever is needed. I want to make sure we still have open communication with everybody, even though we didn't have that public participation tonight. So with that said, I will stop the live stream and we will see you after Executive Session. Thank you.
They're keeping you busy, aren't they?
Yeah. Yep. It's a different world and it's not going to be, I don't want to talk about it, but it's going to be a challenge.
It's a brave new world.
Yeah. It's going to be much different moving forward.
You're not up yet, Joe.
Yep, is it up?
Now you're up.
All right. Now we're out of executive session and do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll say it back.
And we'll call for adjournment, please.
Dr. Swann.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Pastor Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Biesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Yep, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks everybody.
Frozen cons, anything for next month if we do the virtual thing all over again? In fact, getting better. It'll be easier.